Adrian Anne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, March 25, 2024, at 5:15 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a presentation on the recommended fiscal year 2025 budget.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for March 25, 2024. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Thank you. Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our action item for this session is recommended fiscal year 2025 budget presentation.
All right, we'll need a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Please receive and file the presentation.
Second by Farber.
Yeah, a motion by Jones and a second by Farber. Over to you, Mike.
Thank you. Getting my microphone set up here. This is the presentation of the recommended fiscal year 2025 budget. You'll certainly recall that this process began in August of 2023, where the mayor and city council spent three days with a professional consultant looking at establishing the vision and mission statement for the community, establishing five-year goals, and then establishing one-year priorities. And these are the five-year goals that you established: a vibrant community, financially responsible, high-performance city organization, robust local economy, livable neighborhoods and housing, sustainable environment, connected community, diverse arts, culture, parks, and recreation experience and activities, and partnerships for a better Dubuque. Your top priorities that you established are as follows: air service, city workforce retention and attraction, comprehensive study of the fire station locations and staffing, police department full staffing, street maintenance and rehabilitation program, the B-branch detention base and pump replacement, Catfish Creek sanitary sewer project pump station, Central Avenue corridor revitalization plan, leveraging federal and state infrastructure grant programs, and the RAISE grant and matching funds for construction of 14th Street Railroad overpass and Elm Street and 16th Street corridor complete streets. And we'll hear more about the RAISE grant and these other things. What we did with the results of your August sessions was this was given to all of our department managers, our boards and commissions, and they were asked to submit to the city manager budget request that they think would get them on achieving the goals and priorities that you've set. And so that's what you're going to hear about in this budget. The other thing is the mayor and city council adopted a very clear, what I'll call, set of guidelines for to answer the question, what are we trying to accomplish here in the city of Dubuque? And we're trying to create an equitable community, an organization of choice, a high-performance organization and community with engaged employees and residents that is data-driven and outcome-focused, built on the five pillars of resiliency, sustainability, equity, transparency, and compassion. And how are we going to do that? We're going to do it through planning, partnerships, and people. This budget recommendation is built on the city council goals and priorities, major capital improvement projects, leveraging federal and state grants, focus on public safety and To look at the historical context, so in the 1980s, and actually it started in the late 1970s, Dubuque experienced a very severe economic downturn, and in that process lost almost 10% of our population. And then, in the early 1990s, we began a climb out of that deep hole. And over that 23-year climb, we actually have now exceeded our peak population before the 1980s. And we're, that was 95,700, and we're now at almost 100,000 for Dubuque County. And I say we are outperforming most of our peers. This will give you some idea of what I mean by that. If you look at cities across the state of Iowa, they're actually losing population from in the comparing the 2010 census with the 2020 census. Keokuk lost 7% of the population, Fort Dodge, 5.5%, Clinton, 5.5%, Burlington, 5%, Mason City, 4.4%, Spencer, 4%, Marshalltown, almost 3%, lost. Storm Lake, almost 2.5% lost. Temwah, almost 2% loss. Boone, just over 1.5% loss. Muscatine, almost 1/10 to 1% loss. Oskaloosis, no growth at all. There were a couple of smaller communities. Spirit Lake gained 5% and Fairfield gained almost 9%. If you look at the large metropolitan areas across the state, and remember, our metropolitan area is considered to be the entire county of Dubuque County, you can see that the Des Moines metropolitan area, and Iowa City, and it connects with the Ames metropolitan area. So basically, the Des Moines-Aames corridor and the Iowa City-Cedar Rapids corridor saw growth in the state of Iowa, and then next came Dubuque at 4.2%. So while we don't have all the benefits of those communities, like we're not home for the state capital, we don't have Iowa State University, we don't have the University of Iowa, we don't have the second-largest population in the state base like Cedar Rapids does, and of course is connected with Iowa City and the University of Iowa, we still grew at 4.2%. And you look at some other comparable metropolitan areas in the region, Janesville-Baloit only grew at 2.1%, Sioux City, only 1%, Waterloo-Cedar Falls basically didn't grow, Davenport, Moline Rock Island saw a decrease in population, Rockford, Illinois saw a 3% decrease, Peoria saw a 3.3% decrease, Decatur, Illinois saw over a 6% decrease. Once again, we're outperforming our peers. And then I mentioned to you that we lost about 10% of our population in the 1980s. There were other cities across the Midwest that had population losses, but quite frankly, they've never recovered. So you look at Gary, Indiana, if you compare 1970 to 2020, so that 50-year period, they lost 60% of their population still to this day. South Bend, Indiana, 18%, Flint, Michigan, 58%, Detroit, 58%, Akron, Ohio, 31%, Cincinnati, 32%, Cleveland, Ohio, 50%, Dayton, Ohio, 43%, Toledo, Ohio, 29%, Youngstown, Ohio, 50% population loss. Give you some budget context, there are going to be some of these slides that you're going to see about the Greater Dubuque Corporation five-year campaign goals, our work on poverty prevention and reduction, some cost increases we're experiencing, some community safety issues we're dealing with, road and infrastructure issues, economic development and housing, improvements in customer service, identifying and funding important initiatives to sort and support employees, opportunities for grants and forgivable loans, and then some of the federal funding programs like ARPA, the BIL program, and other funding. So the proposed city property tax levy that you're going to hold a public hearing on later tonight, it would bring in about 6% in additional revenue from the current fiscal year, and the tax rate increase would be just 1/4 of 1% of an increase. Now, what kind of impact would that have on the different taxing body, I'm sorry, taxing classifications, member created by the state? With that property tax rate of just a 1/4% increase, the property tax asking, as I mentioned, would increase by 6%. The average residential property would see a 5% increase. The average commercial property would see just over a 25% increase, and the average industrial property would see about a 3.9% increase. Now, one thing I will mention about the average residential, and I apologize, I've got to go to my phone here because I got this email from our city assessor today when I asked him this question. 653 of our commercial parcels are valued at $150,000 or less, and they will not experience this 25.5% increase because they are subject by state law to the residential rollback. So they'll only pay taxes on about 45% of the value of their property. And while I can't give you the exact calculation, we'll have that by the end of our budget process in April, those 653 will experience that rollback on their value. So really, still, small business is still very much supported by this budget recommendation and are not seeing that major increase in their taxes. The new state law required something this year that I think is going to be problematic for our residents, businesses, and for us. So the state required that we fill out this form with the prescribed numbers. So we had no flexibility on what numbers we put in the form. We had to answer the questions the state created, and then this information was submitted to the county, and the county mailed to every property in town, hey, here's your property tax notice, and here's when the city's going to hold their public hearing on the property tax levy. And as I mentioned, that's at 6:30 tonight. So if you look at the what's circled in red, and I got one of these, and it said exactly what it says on here, it looks at residential property with an actual or assessed value of $100,000. And it shows, so homeowner, if you had in fiscal year 24, current year, a property that was assessed at $100,000, that you paid $541 to the city of Dubuque this year. Next year, if you still have a property that's assessed at $100,000, you'll pay $460. So good news, Mr. Residential Property Owner. Your property taxes are going to go down almost 15% of what you pay to the city of Dubuque. There's a couple of problems with this. One is, even if somebody had a property, a residential property that was valued at $100,000 this year, it's not going to be valued at $100,000 next year because property values went up. This doesn't take that into consideration. And so it is a little misleading what we're required to send to our residents because, as I just told you, the average residential property owner in our community is going to actually get a property tax increase of 5%. And can you, Jennifer, remind me, what is the average residential value now? Is it about $180,000? Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is helping me out here with my presentation.
It's $196,000.
So the actually average residential property value is $196,000. Then if you look at the other red circle, and the next question I'll ask you is about commercial property in a minute, it does the same thing for commercial property. So it says, okay, Mr. or Mrs. Commercial Property Owner, if your commercial property this year is assessed at $100,000, you would pay the city of Dubuque $541. If in next year, your property is still assessed at $100,000, you'll pay $460. So good news. You're going to get almost a 15% property tax reduction. Same issues. Even if their property this year was $100,000 assessed value, it would not be assessed at that next year. And as I just told you, the average commercial property owner is looking at just over a 25.5% property tax increase. And what is the average value?
$540,000.
So $540,000 is the average commercial property. And so, once again, the commercial property owners got this in the mail and read it and said, oh, I'm looking, I'm going to get a 15% property tax decrease. I think that's problematic. This is just some more information about the statements that went out to the, from the school district and the city. And I'm not going to go through all those. It basically is the same information that I just shared with you. So as I said, the city of Dubuque measures the impact of change in the property tax rate by creating an average value for properties in different classifications. That average gets increased every year because generally, thank goodness, people's property values go up. The state of Iowa wants cities to look at the impact on a fixed value of $100,000 property. The state of Iowa calculation shows the impact on small businesses and smaller residential properties, but not larger, more valuable residential properties or more valuable commercial properties. And the impact is different because the first $150,000 of a commercial property gets the residential rollback. So remember, they only pay taxes on about 45% of their value for the, for a commercial for the first $150,000. So since the notice only covers $100,000 commercial property, that's subject to the residential rollback. So in other words, less of the value of the property is subject to property tax. So the commercial or residential property with an assessed value of $100,000 would have paid $541 in 2024 and will pay $460 in 2025, a decrease of $81 or 15%. This piece of property probably does not exist. Since 1989, the average Dubuque homeowner has averaged an annual increase in cost in the city portion of their property taxes of about 1.36%, or about $8.41 a year. If the state had been fully funding the homestead tax credit, the increase would have averaged approximately $5.61 a year. There were many years they did not fully fund the homestead property tax credit, however, they have in the recent years. Is that correct, Jennifer? The state's residential rollback factor will decrease from 54.6% in 2024, the current year, to 46.3% or a 15.2% decrease in fiscal year 25. So the decrease in the residential rollback factor decreases the value upon which that each residence is taxed. This decreased taxable value for the average homeowner results in less taxes to be paid per $1,000 assessed value. So we always try and benchmark ourselves. There's only 11 cities in the state of Iowa with a population greater than 50,000, and so we try and benchmark ourselves against them. So all these cities now, not every city, I apologize, most of these cities have identified their fiscal year 25 property tax rate, as you'll be asked to do later tonight. There are a couple cities that still have not identified their rate for fiscal year 25, so in this comparison, it shows their fiscal year 24 rate. You can see Dubuque will end up having the lowest property tax rate of all these 11 cities. Waterloo, which has the highest rate and has established their FY25 rate, is 126% higher than the city of Dubuque property tax rate. And the average of the other 10 cities excluding Dubuque is 58.3% higher than Dubuque's property tax rate. There's been some things over the years that the state of Iowa has done to our property taxes, and one of the things was they did in, back in fiscal year 17, they did what they called property tax reform, and they changed the level of property tax that we received from, this is the chart on multi-residential property rollback. So over time, multi-residential, which was used to be, is three flats and above, used to be taxed at the commercial rate. And in fiscal year 2017, the state began slowly, incrementally, changing their rollback. They created a rollback for them so that eventually they would get the same rollback as residential. They've reached that point. So now, there no longer is a multi-residential property tax classification because it's all, it's all residential, which means they get the full benefit of the residential rollback. So they only pay taxes now on about 45% of their value instead of 100% of the value. So Dubuque's total revenue loss from FY17 to FY24 was $5.6 million of property tax They also, the state in their, expanded or and/or created different exemptions. The homestead exemption for a 65-year-old plus, they expanded the military exemption. There was a reevaluation of residential and commercial. They, as I said, they lowered the residential rollback, so the amount of taxes, a property value that's subject to tax. We are getting better riverfront property lease revenues. We are getting better local ops and sales tax revenues, and we are getting better hotel motel tax revenues. So those are some positives from a revenue perspective. We'll talk more about some of these things. Moody's did upgrade the city bond rating in July of 2023. The mayor and city council just approved the 5% pay increase for the Dubuque Police Protective Association members, and the intent is, in this budget, the recommendation anyway, is that nonrepresented employees would receive the same benefit. The, there is collective, there is an existing collective bargaining agreement for Teamsters that still is in effect for another fiscal year, and that calls for a 3% pay raise for the two Teamsters unions starting July 1st. And the, we're currently in negotiations with the Dubuque Professional Firefighters Association and the International Union of Operating Engineers. The estimated cost of all these wage increases and changes is estimated at almost $2 million. In the budget recommendation, while, and you'll hear more about improvement packages, most which I were not, was not able to recommend because of affordability, not because they weren't needed, there are some that I am recommending that focus on public safety. In the fire department, we're recommending an additional captain's position, and that would be a safety officer. In the fire department, I'm recommending another bureau chief for the EMS division. And then for public safety software, which covers 911, the police department record system, the fire department record system, and the sheriff's department record system, there's a cost of $3 million in the budget for that new software package. That's being split 50/50 with the county. And actually, I don't think that does cover fire, does it? It just, I think maybe it just covers police.
It covers fire.
Well, it also covers fire, okay. Other significant issues, as I mentioned, that years ago, around 2015, the state had done their last effort at property taxes, as they titled it, reform, and they changed the way that commercial and industrial property was taxed, and it severely reduced the revenues to cities and counties and school districts. So the state promised to backfill those losses. Now, the multi-residential that I told you about earlier, no backfill. They just said, we're changing it, you're just going to lose the money. This one, when they changed the taxation for commercial and industrial, they said, we're going to backfill it so you don't lose any revenues. Well, that only lasted so long, and then they changed their mind. And they said, okay, now gradually each year, we're going to stop giving you your backfill payments, and in 2029, we'll receive our last payment. But each year, the amount we get goes down, and you can see this chart that Jennifer Larson has created. So in fiscal year 25, our loss is, I'm sorry, the amount we'll get is 577,000, or that's the amount of our loss, 576,898?
That's how much we're receiving in '25.
Okay, thank you. Other significant issues impacting the budget is gaming revenue. As you know, they're going through a remodeling of the Q Casino, and so that's negatively impacted revenues. But the good news is, the remodeling is anticipated to be done ahead of schedule this summer, and so the impact on fiscal year '25 won't be a negative impact because by July 1st, they will have the new casino open. Interest revenues, in this interest rate environment, we are getting better return on our investments. As I mentioned, hotel motel tax revenues are up, franchise fee revenues are up, and I will tell you about the Moody's Investors service change and methodology. So all these things are things we're going to be covering here. In the area of debt, expenses to make projects grant-eligible and provide matching funds to complete the grants, we have planned for that in our current fiscal year. So what I mean there is with the federal legislation on the Infrastructure Act especially, the billions of dollars available through that program, you have to have projects that are what I'll call shovel-ready. So the city has to actually do some of the planning for the projects to be able to submit a grant to get the money to do the project, and then many of the projects require matching funds, so we have to budget the matching funds. We've got several projects you'll hear about that fit in that category. In the fiscal year '25 capital improvement budget recommendation, there is $88,753,825. That's a 16% increase from the current fiscal year 2024 capital improvement budget. The city will issue $146 million in new debt over the five-year capital improvement program period, and the city will retire about $130 million of existing debt. So we will, over the next five years, increase the city debt by about $16 million. One of the things we have to pay attention to is there's, the state has what's called the statutory debt limit for every community. You're not allowed to issue debt that exceeds 5% of your assessed valuation for your community. And in this case, in fiscal year '25, if you approve this budget, we'll be at about just under 35% of our statutory debt limit. And by the end of the five-year CIP, we would be at just over 35% of our statutory debt limit. So basically, no change over the five-year period with that additional $14 million in And the reason that debt is so important to do capital improvement projects is if you don't issue debt to do them, the liability becomes your debt, the liability of the actual infrastructure. So what do I mean by that? The older a piece of infrastructure gets, and the more it is allowed to deteriorate, the more the costs increase. The longer you wait to invest in infrastructure, the more costs are increased by inflation. And if the investment in infrastructure is not made in this interest rate environment, it will eventually need to be made when interest rates could be potentially higher, thereby increasing costs. And the massive amount of federal grant money that's being made available now really speaks to the idea of, let's issue some debt for our portion of it, and then let's compete for these federal dollars so we can do these major infrastructure projects that you hear about here, mostly with federal dollars. So this basically is a slide that's a representation of what I just told you about the debt issuances for the city of Dubuque. And these are actually a list of the projects that we'll be issuing debt for over the next five years. And so you can see, anybody could look at this list if they didn't agree with the fact that the city was issuing debt, and then say, okay, then which projects wouldn't you do, or which pieces of fire equipment wouldn't you buy if you didn't want to issue debt? So the majority of new debt will fund fire equipment replacement, fire station improvements, fire station expansion, airport improvements, the Chaplain-Schmidt Island Iowa amphitheater, the reimagined Comiskey Park project, the federal building renovations, solid waste collection vehicles, sanitary sewer improvements, water improvements, stormwater improvements, parking improvements, and the renovation of Five Flags. The city will retire $124 million of existing debt over the next five years. The city, as I said, will be at 35% of the statutory debt limit by June 30, 2025. Remember, in FY16, the city was at 86%. Remember, in FY16, the city was at 86% of our statutory debt limit. So 35% is a 52% decrease in the use of our statutory debt limit since 2016. And remember, that fits in with the debt reduction strategy you adopted then, where you instructed us, okay, you can issue debt, but each year, we want you to issue less debt than you retire. And so we've been doing that, and at the same time, the assessed value of the community's been growing. So that 5% of assessed value is how this calculation is done. So once again, we compare ourselves with the other 10 cities over $50,000 in the state of Iowa, when we look at the percentage of legal debt limit used. And when you look at that, we have the fifth lowest use of the statutory debt limit. Des Moines is, which is the highest, at 67%, is 91% higher in the use of statutory debt limit than the city of Dubuque. And the average of the other communities, which is 42%, the average is 21% higher than Dubuque's use of the statutory debt limit at about 35%. So the total city indebtedness as of June 30th, 2025, is projected to be $275,000, 35% of the statutory debt limit. And the total city indebtedness as of June 30th, 2015, was almost $296,000, which was over 69% of the statutory debt limit. The city is projected to have $23 million more in debt as of June 30th, 2025. This includes $3.25 million issued for the Chaplain-Schmidt Island Iowa amphitheater project, and that debt is going to be repaid by the Dubuque Racing Association, not the taxpayers of Dubuque. Retired debt versus new debt, so this is an illustration of what I've already said, is that there were years, all the way through FY23, where we were retiring more debt than we were issuing. And however, now to take advantage of these, this just massive amount of federal grants that are available, and the need to invest in our infrastructure for the next three years at least, I'm sorry, the current year, which is FY24, and then the next two years, which is FY25 and '26, we will actually be issuing more debt than we'll be retiring it, should you approve this budget. And so back to 2015, we were at 90% of the statutory debt limit. If you accept this recommendation in fiscal year '25, we'll be about 35% of the statutory debt limit. By the end of the recommended CIP, we'd be just over 35% of the statutory debt limit. And the five-year CIP includes about $3.25 million in FY25, and $5.5 million in FY26 for the Chaplain-Schmidt Island Iowa amphitheater, which will be paid by the Dubuque Racing Association, those debt payments. And if you were to take our, our projections out 10 years for our capital improvement program, we anticipate being at about 20% of our statutory debt limit by 2034. And this, this is an illustration of that, showing that, that box is FY25, we're at, where we will be at about 35% of our statutory debt limit, a 62% decrease from FY15 to FY25. General fund reserves. So Moody's Investment Services recommends a 30% general fund operating reserve for AA-rated cities. As I mentioned earlier, in July of 2023, Moody's Investor Services upgraded the city of Dubuque's outstanding general obligation bonds from AA3 to AA2, as well as the outstanding sales increment revenue bonds from A2 to A1. And this is how they described it. Notable credit factors include strong financial operations and ample revenue raising flexibility, which resulted in steadily improved available fund balance and cash. The city serves as a regional economic center, and its regional economic growth rate has outpaced the nation over the past five years. In the area of general fund reserves, the city had, had projected back in 2017, when we were, started building up our reserves, that we would reach a 20% reserve level by FY2022. In fact, the city met the 20% reserve requirement in 2017, five years ahead of schedule, and has sustained a greater than 20% reserve ever since then. So the general fund reserves are calculated two different ways. One is the way that Moody's requires to calculate it, and one is, one, so one's a cash basis, basically, and one's an accrual basis. So on the accrual basis, this is our percent of reserves, 42% in FY24, 34% in FY25, and then about 25.5% every year thereafter. When you look at the general fund plus enterprise accrual funds, so Moody's also changed their rules and said, we, we just don't want to know what your general fund reserves are, we also want to know what your enterprise fund reserves are. Remember, the enterprise funds are the water fund, the sanitary sewer fund, the stormwater fund, the refuse fund, because those are funds that function without any property tax support. They are solely based on the amount of revenue they generate from their fees, those are our enterprise funds. When you combine those together on this accrual basis, FY24, we have a 40% reserve, FY25, 35%. And then after that, every year, 30% of reserves. And remember, that's the, Moody's standard is the 30% number. Significant issues impacting the budget, the city portion of the health insurance expense is projected to remain unchanged. I consider this to be a huge victory for the city of Dubuque. You remember about, round numbers, about five years ago, we switched our insurance program, it's, we're self-funded, but we switched to Wellmark as our manager of our funds, so our third-party administrator, and we also switched to Cottingham and Butler as our health and, health insurance consultant. And it's just been a massive change in expense for us on the health insurance front. And I'll tell you, you won't find many cities across the country, or businesses, or anybody else, that is managing their insurance expenses where they're not seeing a massive increase this year. We're not seeing that. We, we are needing to increase the property tax support to our transit department, and our electrical energy expense is expected to increase about 10%. Their alliance looking at a, a big rate increase. We talked about the state-funded backfill on commercial and industrial. So beginning in fiscal year '23, the backfill will be eliminated over an eight-year period, so that was last year. We're in 20, FY24 now, and the budget we're proposing is FY25. The, the projected backfill Dubuque for the two-tier assessment limitation in FY25 is estimated to be about $577,000. The reevaluation of residential and commercial property happens every two years. The average residential property value increased over 23%. Now, that's really good news. The way the city assessor does, looks at the increase in property value is based on actual sales. So people's property actually is increasing at 23%. That means we're doing a lot of things right in Dubuque, because we're, it's a, means it's a place where people are willing to buy homes at, at much higher prices than they used to be able to buy, be willing to buy them at. And then the average commercial property value, remember again, based on actual sales, increased 25%. That brings into the residential rollback, so the state, to try and mitigate some of that increase for residential and for the first $150,000 of commercial, is they brought the rollback from 54.6% down to 46%. What does that mean? In the current year, a residential property was taxed on 55% of their property value. Next year, they'll only be taxed on 46% of their property value. Our riverfront lease revenues are going up. We have that built into the leases, and we'll be getting about $212,000 more in riverfront leases. Fortunately, sales are robust in our community, and our local option sales tax is going up. Our hotel motel tax, even though there's no new hotels on this, this change from '24 to '25, you can see that we're looking at an increase in our hotel motel taxes. I mentioned to you that Moody's Investor Services methodology has changed on how they rate the creditworthiness of cities and, and in their revenue funds. And in a, in a way, that's impacted us positively with our rate increases, but also increased the demand on our reserves. I told you that the state of Iowa now expanded the housing homestead exemption for those 65-plus. That, that exemption was newly created in, in House File 718 last year. Almost 3,400 property owners filed for that exemption. Fiscal year '25, $3,250 in taxable value, and in FY26, that would impact about $6,500 in taxable value on properties. Our, our revenue reduction for the city of Dubuque is about $113,000 hit. The military exemption was expanded in fiscal year '25, and that, that affects almost 2,000 homes. The revenue loss to the city will be $77,000. And then I want to say some things about the recommended five-year capital improvement program. So these are some of the projects that are going to be recommended. As you know, the Dubuque Racing Association's making an over $80 million improvements to the Q Casino, including building a new hotel and adding a family entertainment zone. That has nothing to do with any of the city capital improvement program. I'm just pointing that out to you, that they're making that investment, but there are some ancillary investments the city is going to be making. The city is going to be building an over $15 million outdoor amphitheater on Chaplain-Schmidt Island, has built millions of dollars of trails, and is investing over $2.5 million in replacement of the sanitary sewer, and addition of a new sanitary sewer lift station on Schmidt Island to accommodate all this development. Now, in the case of the $15 million being spent on the outdoor amphitheater, remember I told you that the DRA is, is, is retiring the debt that we're using there? And also, we received, I believe it was a $3.5 million state grant towards the construction of that outdoor amphitheater. And in the case of the millions of dollars of trails, most of those were from state and federal grants. The, I would say this is complementary to the Chaplain-Schmidt Island project. The city's planning an over $40 million project to build a railroad overpass on 14th Street, which will include a complete street design on Elm Street and 16th Street, and added hike-bike lanes, the 16th Street Bridge over the Piazza Channel, and a roundabout on 16th Street at Sycamore Street and Admiral Sheehy Drive. That's going to connect the porous census tracts in the city of Dubuque to all the jobs on Kerper Boulevard, both the Kerper Boulevard Industrial Park, the Kerper Boulevard Industrial Riverfront, and all the jobs that are on Schmidt Island. The Catfish Creek Sewer Shed Intercept Sanitary Sewer Improvements is a $47 million project that's in our capital improvement program budget. The Water and Resource Recovery Center High Strength Waste Project, which is about, actually, it's just over $7 million in total, I think it's 6.2 million in this five-year CIP. And most of that is going to be funded by the fees from the companies that bring us the high-strength waste. We are going to be updating our industrial controls at the Water and Resource Recovery Center for about $3 million. We're also going to be doing some capacity upgrades for our BOD processing at the Water and Resource Recovery Center at just over $1 million. And this is an illustration of the Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer Shed project that I told you about for $47 million. The purple section there to the right is where we're building the new lift station and putting that line of replacement sewer in, and some new, because we've changed the path of some of the sewer. The green line is replacement of existing sewers. You got to remember, these sewers were installed in the 1980s. I credit the people that were in charge then, because they were looking to the future for this to be the new development areas of our community. The problem is, they undersized the, the system for the amount of development that is happening. And also, since it was built in the 1980s, it's now almost, what, 50 years old, and it, and it deteriorates over time. So we're doing a lot of replacement, putting in another lift state, a new lift station at much greater capacity. And then if you look at that last blue line on the left, or turquoise, whatever color that is, that connects all this sanitary sewer to the Southwest Arterial, so that people can start, that corridor's been opened up with the highway, now we'd like to see developments start occurring out there. Also, we'll be extending a water main to the Southwest Arterial for the same purpose at almost $2 million. And this just is an illustration, that purple line on the right, the other lines are not funded, so none of those other boxes on the left are funded as part of the CIP, just the purple box and line on the right that's bringing the water line to the Southwest Arterial, from where it terminates now, excuse me, by Creekwood Lane. The mayor and city council also has approved the program to help low-income residents replace their private lead water service line. This is almost a $6 million project. And the nice thing is, this is a no-interest loan from the federal government through the Iowa Finance Authority at the state of Iowa, and 49% of the loan is forgivable. We also had some, our water system tests positive for PFAS in our shallow well system. Remember, our water system is a shallow well system and a deep well system, and we do not get our water from the river, like some communities do. The deep well system proved to be fine, no PFAS, no measurable PFAS through the testing that's capable now, but the shallow wells did show PFAS. So what we're doing in this project is building another deep well. And what that'll allow us to do is almost never use the shallow wells. There may be some times in the summer during peak periods where we do have to mix in the shallow wells, but we think then we'll be able to mix it in at a rate that we won't exceed the EPA PFAS levels. We're also looking at doing some other things filter-wise with PFAS. Now, for now, this is in the city budget as us paying for this debt. We are part of a lawsuit that has been settled, and we anticipate, I think sometime in the next year, 18 months, that there'll be a distribution of dollars to all the parties in the lawsuit. We don't yet know how much that will be. So we really need to budget this money ourselves now, but I do anticipate what's going to happen is, a, a portion of this, maybe a major portion of this, is going to be paid by that lawsuit settlement, and that'll allow the mayor and council to either reevaluate the rates at that time, or to look at projects, because there were many other projects proposed for this capital improvement budget that are not in here, because we did not want to recommend more of a rate increase. I don't know, Krena, if you have anything to add about the PFAS settlement?
I've reached out to our outside council, and I'm waiting for additional information that I have not received back yet to confirm the timeline that Mike referenced, and to use what, the worksheets that we have submitted and the information we have submitted into the formula related to distribution of the settlement proceeds. And so I will make that information available soon as, soon as I get a response back.
Thank you. The, the third pressure zone connection for our water system by Olympic Heights and Tanzinate Drive, there's a $2 million project in here. And then you'll remember when you approved the over 200-unit apartment complex at the old Bowling and Beyond site, part of that development agreement was that we needed to replace the existing sanitary, sanitary sewer lift station for two reasons. It had aged out, so it needed to be replaced anyway, but it also didn't have the capacity to handle that huge apartment complex. And so that $1.5 million is in this capital improvement budget. And so that $1.5 million is in this capital improvement budget. Now, this is an illustration that shows two of the things I mentioned to you tonight about sanitary sewer. So the one on the right, the red circle that's in the purple, that's the one I just said, the $1.5 million lift station replacement. Then on the left, there is Schmid Island, and that shows you where we'll be running new sewer and an additional sanitary sewer lift station on Schmid Island to accommodate all that redevelopment. And as I mentioned, the Schmid Island sanitary sewer improvements are about $2.6 million. This is just an illustration that of that project, we're able to use some ARPA, federal ARPA dollars, grant dollars, to pay for that of about $218,000. One of our major projects that we've been trying to get done for several years is the B-branch gate and pump replacement project there at 16th Street and Kerper Boulevard. That's an over $28 million project. Fortunately, we have already received an $8 million USEDA grant, so this project is in the budget with us paying through debt and other stormwater sources for this capital project. I will tell you that we also have, and actually it says $8 million USEDA grant, it's actually $7.8 million, it's not quite 8 million. We do have another grant application we're going to be submitting for $8 million through federal homeland security, and we're very optimistic about that grant. So if we should be so fortunate as to receive that grant, we'll be able to reduce the amount of debt we're going to issue to do this B-branch project. But we won't know that probably till, I think, if I remember correctly, it's August or September. But there's a lot of optimism around that opportunity. I mentioned the 14th Street Overpass project. So while in total, it's about a $43 million project, we've already done the planning, which is about $4 million for that, and we received a $2.5 million federal raise grant to do that, finance that planning. And we took that planning information and then submitted a federal raise grant to do the construction. And we haven't heard back yet whether we've gotten that grant, so we don't know yet. But the grant application was for $25 million. So being the eternal optimist, I really believe this $43 million project is in the budget. I really think we'll get that construction grant, because I can't imagine they gave us a $2.5 million planning grant only to tell us no once we did the plan and submitted it to them. This again is also being supported by the Dubuque Racing Association, because when we submitted the $2.5 million grant to do the $4 million in planning, we didn't have the money to finance the match. And so the Dubuque Racing Association financed the match for that grant application. This is an idea of what that project's going to look like. So the lower-left there, that green, that is the overpass, green and yellow, that's the overpass over the railroad. It then connects with 16th Street at Sycamore. That shows the roundabout there. Then you can see Elm Street, which is running north and south on the left side of this screen. That'll be a complete street design, will be a nice bike trail. And then 16th Street from Elm all the way to Chaplain-Schmid Island will be redesigned to have a bike trail. And there'll also be a roundabout at Admiral Sheehy Drive where Schmid Island, the roads connect into Schmid Island. That'll be another roundabout. And this is an artist representation of what the overpass is going to look like. And this is an artist representation of what the Elm Street will look like with the bike And as I mentioned, Schmid Island Iowa Amphitheater, we received a $3 million Iowa Economic Development Authority grant, so we're trying to leverage these grants. We've received support from the Dubuque Racing Association on debt retirement, and we'll be building that $16 million project. While this is not a city project, this is a state project that we're hoping to get in the five-year plan for the Iowa Department of Transportation. This would be a complete reconstruction of the intersection of Northwest Arterial and Highway 20, a $17.5 million project, $12 million from the Iowa DOT, and a contribution from the city of $5.5 million. The city contribution comes from the DMATS, the federal money that DMATS gets. This is a representation of what that looks like. The important, one of the many important parts of this, is the south leg of the four-way intersection, the leg that goes into Walmart, will be closed, and that'll be turned into a frontage road. And then also, there'll be a frontage road extended from the two car dealerships that are at the northwest corner of this intersection, and their traffic will then go to the traffic light at Old Highway Road instead of just entering directly onto US 20. And then also, westbound traffic on US 20, when they want to turn north onto the Northwest Arterial, instead of going all the way up to the traffic light, stopping and then turning right, they'll have an acceleration lane, that they'll just leave the Highway 20 before they get to the intersection, jump on the acceleration lane and get into the Northwest Arterial. So it's going to make this intersection so much more efficient. The $24 million to renovate Five Flags is in this five-year CIP. And as I mentioned, $3 million in public safety software improvements, half-paid by Dubuque County. And in the area of public safety in the capital budget, there's almost $9 million. Two new fire engines for $1.5 million, a new ambulance for $400,000. When I say "new," I mean replacement. So two replacement fire engines, a replacement ambulance, a replacement fire rescue boat, improvements at the fire burn tower in partnership with our county partners for almost $500,000. The fire station expansion for almost $5 million. I will tell you, it was moved back a year in the CIP. And then remodeling the bunk rooms in all the fire stations for $1.4 million. We are anticipating an increase in ambulance revenues of about $2.25 million. In the street program, our Public Works Department will be doing asphalt overlays on five miles of streets. Remember, we think we're going to be building that 14th Street Overpass and roundabouts and related improvements once we get that federal grant, the Northwest Arterial and Highway 20 intersection improvements, and then the street stape improvements along Central Avenue Corridor. So what are the -- so the money that's needed to do all these things, we just talked about it, comes through property taxes, which I already mentioned to you, but also each of the enterprise funds will see rate increases. We're recommending a 12% increase in the water rate, a 9% increase in the sanitary sewer rate, a 9% increase in the curbside collection rate, and a 15% increase in the stormwater rate. Now, I want to remind you that we do think we're going to have a very competitive for this $8 million federal grant that we'll hear about in August, so that potentially could positively impact this stormwater rate. And let's see, let's see on these other ones. No, I guess, I don't think I have anything that, let me just look at my notes here on the different. Now, that pretty much covers the enterprise funds. So I told you that after you do your August goal-setting, that I give all that information to the departments, and I say, okay, now you need to tell me what you need to accomplish the goals and priorities that the Mayor and City Council have. And one of the ways they do that is through improvement package requests. And so we received $3.2 million in general fund improvement package requests, and the recommendation in the budget was only able to afford about $889,000 of those. So as you go through the improvement package request, you're just going to see one after another that's not recommended for funding. Now, most of the non-recurring ones are recommended for funding, because we used DRA gaming revenues, our distribution revenues, instead of putting that money in the capital improvement project budget like we would do normally. Instead, we used it to fund non-recurring improvement packages. So it's still a non-recurring expense, like a capital improvement is. But we weren't able to do that with recurring improvement packages, because if you do that, then next year, you've got to figure out some other way to pay for it, and who knows? I don't know what that would be. We do believe that the recommended budget will continue your investment in people, businesses, and organizations that are making a difference in our community, and continued investment in the infrastructure must advise for Dubuque to continue to thrive, and that's back to the idea of creating equitable community of choice. The one thing I did mean to mention before we left the capital improvement budget is in the area of tax increment financing districts, the determination on how much money those districts generate is based on the property taxes of the city, the county, the school district, and the community college. And when we originally create this, we don't actually know what their rates are, so what we do, we don't know, because they have not yet established their next-year rates, so what we do is we use this-year rates. Well, since we did that, the school district has identified that they're going to lower their property tax rate. So assuming that's actually what happens, we are going to have to reduce the amount of resources available in the tax increment financing districts. So by April 11th, final budget public hearing, we will probably be bringing to use some modifications to the capital improvement program, which will show less resources, and some of the projects that are in there are going to have to come out or be delayed. We don't have that done yet. So there's opportunities for public input. Their public hearing on the fiscal year '25 proposed property tax rate is tonight at 6:30. There'll be public meetings on March 26th, March 27th, March 28th, April 2nd, April 4th, April 8th, April 9th. And then the final public hearing on the budget will be April 11th. And on that night, you have to adopt a budget, because by state law, by April 15th, the budget has to be adopted and the final levy established. There's plenty of opportunities, you can see, for citizen comment and input, either electronically or in person. The state of Iowa made some other changes to property tax law in the last session. Now fortunately, it doesn't have a tremendous impact on the city of Dubuque right now, because we had room in our trust and agency levy to deal with some of the issues that they created. But as I also did mention to you, that this idea of this mailing that became a requirement this year, I think, has complicated things, and while it was meant to create transparency, I think it actually is going to have, unfortunately, the opposite effect. And when you have your public hearing tonight at 6:30, you're going to be able to decrease the rate you said you were going to adopt, and so you established for the public hearing at 6:30 tonight. So you'll be considering that rate at 6:30. Whatever you adopt at 6:30, you also, April 11th, have another opportunity to revisit the property tax rate. Again, it can't be increased, but it could be decreased if you decide through this budget process that there's some things recommended that you don't want to do. And that ends my budget presentation. If you don't mind, I just want to check a couple of my notes to make sure I didn't forget to mention something that I thought was important to mention. And the answer is, it does not appear that I did. Jennifer Larson, do you have anything else you think I should have mentioned? All right, so we still have 10 minutes left in this meeting, if you have any questions.
Well, luckily, you have a round two coming up very soon, if you missed anything. So I'll open it up for discussion and questions, keeping in mind that we have much more room for discussion and questions after a public hearing later tonight. So Mr. Spring, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Real simple question. I know we are banking on receiving these grants. If we do not receive these grants, we will not have to basically go on as much debt. Is that correct?
Well, so some of those are, the answer is yes, and some of it's no. So give an example. So in this five-year budget is to build the 14th Street Overpass. The only way we can afford to do that is if we get the $25 million federal grant that we applied for. So if we don't get that, then the money we have allocated to match that, yes, you wouldn't have to spend, because you didn't get the $25 million. Most of the money that you've obligated to match that is DMATS, transportation dollars, so it doesn't come back to you, goes back to DMATS and could be reallocated for some other project in the city or county. But there is some other dollars that are in there. I can tell you probably what I would recommend if we don't get the grant this year, is we reapply next year. Because the federal infrastructure bill, I think, still has four years left on it, and I'll go back to, we did all the planning for $4.2 million, and to do that planning, we had to get a $2.5 million federal grant to do that planning last year. I just cannot imagine that they gave us $2.5 million planning grant to not give us the construction grant. But that doesn't mean it's, we're going to get it this year, but I think we're going to get it. But the other example I wanted to use was on the stormwater facility at 16th and Kerper. Now, in that case, that is 100% in our budget, and we're ready to build it. And that includes a $7.8 million from EDA grant that we already got, so we know we have that money. We're ready to go. However, there's another grant program at the federal government for $8 million, and if we get that one, then that would displace some of the debt you are going to issue to build that. So we wouldn't have to use all that debt, we could use the federal grant. And that's perfectly within the rules, but it would save you some debt issuance, and then you'd have the opportunity in the stormwater fund to decide, okay, now we want to lower the rate increase. Or there's a whole bunch of stormwater projects that were proposed that are not in this budget, because we couldn't afford them. You may say, well, let's do those now that we have these additional dollars, or capacity to borrow dollars would be a better way to put it.
Thank you.
One more question or discussion, and then we'll wait for the next meeting, because I want to give ourselves a break here. We've got a long week ahead. Ms. Farber?
Yeah, so we're going into the local option sales tax, which is about, you projected to be about $12 million in revenue for us, based on last year's or this year's budget. Does that eventually taper off for us? Is there some legislation in the future that we need to be concerned about for future revenue stream? I just don't recall what that status is.
Yeah, so my answer will be, I hope not. But last year, not this year, thank goodness, last year in the state legislature, they were talking about not letting, the way it works now is the local option sales tax is paid to the state, but it comes back 100% to the city. When I say the city, the county, and then the county gets some, Asbury gets some, the city of Dubuque gets some, everybody gets a cut of it in the county, all the cities and the county. Last year in the legislature, they were talking about, okay, we're not going to do it that way. We're going to get the money, the state, and we're going to take 3/8 of it and spend it on conservation programs. We're going to send everybody back the rest of it, and we're going to backfill their loss. And so we would still get at least the same amount, but remember the terms "backfill the loss." Because the last time, in 2016, when they promised they were going to backfill the loss from commercial and industrial property tax changes, oh, they did for a couple of years, and then they stopped. So that's a huge threat to us. If they take 3/8 of that money and start giving it to conservation programs and backfill our loss, just be ready. Sometime in the next couple of years, you'll lose that too.
Okay, thank you. I just, it was, $12 million is significant, so I wanted to make sure that we were at least aware of it for future planning. Thank you, Mike.
All right, so let's hold all other questions. Write them down. I'll make sure you get a chance to ask them later after the public hearing that we have here that starts at 6:30. So for the next six minutes, we will be adjourned. Thank you, Mike.